Good evening. Welcome to the Leiria City Council Meeting for Monday, November 3rd, 2025. At this time, I'll take a moment of reflective silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Tolet, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Tolet. If I could ask the audience to please turn your phones to the silent mode or off, it'd be greatly appreciated for the council meeting. Mr. Clerk, can I have roll call, please?
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Sarah.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Oswald.
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Tolet.
Here.
Mr. Lippian.
Here.
Mrs. Sorka.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Stewart.
Here.
All present.
Public hearings?
We have none.
Can I get approval in a minute, as distributed?
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Remarks and reports from city officials. Mayor Brewbaker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things. Over the next week and a half, we have five ribbon cuttings of new businesses opening in the city of Leiria on Wednesday of this week at noon over at the Shops on Broad at 374. We have Designs by Kathy V. We'll be doing her ribbon cutting there at noon. Next Thursday, the 13th, at 3:00, over at the Pace McGregor Senior Clinic behind Lowe's on Leona, we'll be doing their ribbon cutting grand opening. They're expecting close to 200 people for that event. That was that $6.5 million project that was done earlier this year. We finally got them the approval through all this other stuff that's going on in DC to get them, get their funding and get open. Then on Saturday, the 15th, we have three ribbon cuttings at the Shops on Broad. At 11:00, we have Creations by Kianga. As you know, she was the lady, young lady that we utilized our space downstairs in hopes of opening up a storefront, and she will realize that dream on the 15th. And then at noon, we have Find It/Keep It, which is a thrift shop also in 374 Broad. And then at 12:00 will be Alley Rose Creations. So we'll be doing three of them all in one day, all separately, to honor their opening at the Shops on Broad. So that's going to bring them to about six locations inside there within the last six weeks, and they're looking to add more to that. Then also this evening, as a part of our semi-annual report, I have from McCully and Company, who is our grant writer lobbyist, I have Vince Peterson, who is the one we work greatly with, directly with, has also communicated and got us meetings with our Ohio delegation here in Ohio, as well as in DC, and also the proprietor, the owner, Mr. Justin McCully. So, Mr. President, with your permission, if Mr. Peterson can kind of give a short presentation on the work that they've been doing with the city over the last six or seven months. Mr. Peterson?
Very good. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Vincent Peterson II. My address is 8671 Bayberry Drive, Warren, Ohio 44484.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, President Stewart, for having me. Thank you, Mayor Brewbaker. Thank you all for this opportunity. First, let me say, working with the city of Leiria has truly been a great experience, not only for myself, but for McCully and Company. The way that this administration handles disseminating information and partnering with us in order to go after grants, in order to lobby, in order to go after member-directed spending, has truly been a great experience, whether that's working with Chief Pernesti or Captain Palmer from the Police Department, Director Riordan, Director McKillips, the mayor himself. We've seen great success. I just wanted to cover a few of those successes that we've had, just in recent years, starting with some of our award wins. In 2024 and 2025, we received 10 grant awards. During that time, that's $1.7 million. We've received the Nature Works Grant, which is about $70,000 going to the Pocket Park. We received the Shine a Light on Dumpers Grant, which is about $19,000 going towards upgrading fencing and security measures down at the Republic Steel Quarry. We received the Community and Litter Grant. It's $136,000 to go towards the contract with Barnes Nursery to operate the compost facility. We received Land and Water Conservation Fund, $325,000 for the West Park Inclusive Playground. In 2025, we received $65,000 from the Violent Crime Reduction Grant for the Neighborhood Impact Unit with the Police Department. We've also received the Safer Grant for $847,000 to hire additional firefighters. There's the H2 Ohio Grant, Chloride Reduction Grant, that we received $60,000 for a brine production mixer and storage tank. There is the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, the EECBG program. We received $115,000 for replacing high-pressure streetlights, sodium streetlights, with new LED lights in the poles here in downtown. 2024, we also received the Violent Crime Reduction Grant for $89,000 for the Neighborhood Impact Unit. And last award was the Water Bottle Refilling Station for $3,000 in the South Park Picnic Shelter. So, in total, since working with Leiria since 2020, we've received about 51 grants totaling about $8.9 million. Currently, right now, we still have nine grants that are pending, that we've worked on and have been submitted, and we're just waiting to hear back. There is the FY25 Cops Hiring Program, which is a little over $1 million to hire additional officers. There's the NEA Grants for Arts Grant that is going towards the Cleveland Pops Concert. Hopefully, we'll hear the mayor play something there again. Law Enforcement Mental Health and Wellness Implementation Grants, $117,000 for an inclusive wellness program for our officers. There's the Transportation for Livable Community Initiative, which is our latest grant we just submitted last week. That's $150,000, and that's to build a new pedestrian and transportation study and plan, so that we can go after projects that are updated. I believe the current one, which has been one that we've gone after multiple times and been able to do a lot of work with, just needs some updating, so we're going after a new plan with that. The Fire Prevention and Safety Grant, that is $204,000, and that's to implement a really cool program with smoke detectors, where the fire department would be able to go in and install smoke detectors in these places and homes that need it. The NOPEC Foundation Grant was $40,000 we went after for Leiria Art Council. That building needs a new HVAC, so we went for that with the NOPEC Foundation Grant. OCJS Body-Worn Camera Grant Program for additional body-worn cameras. The Assistance to Firefighters Grant, AFG, I hope to have an answer for Chief Pernesti sooner than later, but that has been on hold for a new pumper truck, and as well as the Safety Intervention Grant with the BWC. So, we've had a lot of success in our grant work with the city, and that's really a testament, not to us in our writing or anything like that, but our partnership that we formed here in Leiria with the staff, with the administration, and being able to get the information and make sure that our grants are strong and that they are good ones that we can be successful at. We also lobby for them. We're the federal and state lobbyists, and because of some of our lobbying that we've done, we've been able to see great results in that. This year alone, we've had several meetings that I think have been very important. May 22nd, we met with Max Kovacs from Senator Marino's office. He is his Northeast Director. He came down to the city, met with the mayor, to discuss some earmarked projects. June 4th, the mayor, myself, Director Culver, we went down to DC and met with Senator Marino, Senator Huestead, and Congressman Latta in person in their offices to discuss not only earmarked projects, but to discuss some of the issues we've seen throughout the city, Norfolk Southern Bridges and those type of things. And on June 5th, we actually attended a White House briefing, so that we could get up to date with some of the new faces, with the Intergovernmental Affairs. And those people, it's important for us to know, because when we can't reach somebody in an agency, we can reach out to Intergovernmental Affairs, and they'll point us in the right direction. August 20th, we had a private meeting with Senator Marino to discuss earmarks even further. That happened in Cleveland at the City Club. September 4th, Senator Huestead's Deputy District, Northeast District Director came down, Duncan, to meet with the mayor and discuss earmark projects and discuss the city. They want to get to know the city and learn more about what's important and what those projects are. And on September 12th, Rep. Manning came down, and she started our discussions for capital budget. I know it seems early already, but capital budget is almost here, and we discussed our project with her. She gave us a lot of good insight. And as far as member-directed spending goes, just in the past two years, FY24, we were able to get $1 million for the Southeast Sanitary Sewer Interceptor, which was a really good win for us. Obviously, we know FY25, the budget did not pass. We did have pending earmarks in FY25. That did not pass and got passed off to the next year here in FY26, which we are waiting on prayerfully. A budget will pass eventually. We would be looking for that to pass probably in the spring. They have to pass the CR now, but we're hoping sometime, sooner than later, early next year, they will pass a budget, because we do have two current earmarks sitting there, and that is the Middle Avenue Sewer Extension Project. That's $2 million. We have pending right now in an earmark there. And the Police Radio Replacement Project is $500,000 we have pending. So, we've seen a lot of success. Hopefully, we will continue to see success with those grants that are pending. We'll see success with these earmarks, but I am just very grateful for the partnership and for the leadership of this administration and everybody that I've had the chance to work with.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any questions for Mr. Peterson, Mr. Oswald, and then Mr. Tolet?
Through you, Mr. President. I was fortunate enough to sit at the table with you guys. I think it was the mayor's address.
Yes, sir.
And it made me feel good, because I felt like somebody. I'm talking with some really cool guys here. Consulting work, I think, you know, we may have discussed this, it's hard to pay for a consultant, because you're like, am I going to get anything out of it?
Yes, sir.
And, you know what, your company is not an expense. It's an investment, and we're seeing that we're getting something out of that investment. And you guys are connected to the right people, which I like to see, and you work good with the mayor. So, I'd hopefully think that this would be a good family, that we could all keep this thing going. I appreciate the work you guys are doing. I just want to thank you very much.
Thank you. I truly appreciate that. Mr. Tolet?
Through you, Mr. President. When you first came in, when McCully first came in, I asked for two things. Clear transparency. You've absolutely done that on an extremely regular basis. That was something that was brought up right at the beginning. And to echo the councilman's, quote, "return on investment." What we've seen so far has been 17 to 1 of what we've spent to return. The taxpayers have seen 17 to 1 of their money coming back into the community. A lot of it isn't bright and shiny, but when we can fully staff the fire department, when we can get cameras for the police department, when we can assist with the South Side Sewer Project, just amazing. You've done exactly what you said you would do, and it's worked out great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would ask, Mr. Peterson, thank you for your presentation and information. If you could, you know, send your, you know, some bullet points or something to what you've discussed here tonight, on what you've attained already, what is out there in the balance that's hanging, whether you go through the administration, send it to them, they can forward it to council, just so council has an update of what's going on, even based on your presentations, they can have a little hard copy in front of them to kind of take a look at those things. So-
Yes, sir.
That'd be greatly appreciated for that. Does anybody else have any questions? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Very good. Safety Service Director, Mr. Parnowski.
Thank you. Through you, just two things tonight. The ambulance study has been completed. I see that you've been provided with a copy of it by the Council Clerk's Office. I just wanted to offer that, should you have any questions about the process, or the content, or the outcome, I'd be happy to sit down with you and discuss that. Chief Pernesti was very helpful and very engaged in this process, as was I. So, I'm looking forward to discussing the results of the study with you in the future, but if you'd like to set up a time to come in and talk about it one-on-one, you're always welcome to do so. And then, secondly, dispatch negotiations have been, or negotiations with the dispatch union have been completed. We're finalizing a red line, the contract with revisions, and we'll refer when that's completed, and available for any questions, should you have any.
In regards to the EMS study, when do you, after you have maybe some initial meetings, when are you looking to bring that in front of council?
In regards to what part, I'm sorry?
When are you looking to bring it in front of council for further discussion on the floor?
The ambulance study?
Yes.
Well, I know it's on the referrals for tonight, so part of it's going to be scheduling the consultant, and when he's available, I believe he's out of North Carolina.
Okay.
So I'd like to talk with you about dates that might work for council, so I can offer him some dates, the same.
Very good. Any questions for the director? All right. Very good. Thank you. Finance Director Pluski.
No report, Mr. President.
Any questions for the finance director? Law Director Derry?
Good evening. Through you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Leiria Police Department, Chief Walsh. Any questions for the chief? Ms. Sorka.
Thank you. Through you. A comment. The new vehicles look fantastic. I'm so glad that that happened. Number two, I wondered what our authorized strength is right now.
Sorry. How about now? I always struggle with that. First of all, I appreciate council support on the new vehicle design. It was a lengthy process. To get where we are today, we've got four vehicles completed, and I hope to have those finished over the next couple of months. So, thank you again. I personally think they look good, and I hope you guys do as well. Well, we wanted to make them more professional, more identifiable, and I think we've been successful in doing both. In regards to our staffing, we are currently at 85 officers. That's counting three that are in the police academy that will be graduating in December, and that is our maximum budgeted staffing right now for 2025. I hope to get more, but it's all going to depend on our next year's budget approval.
If I could continue. I think at some point, it would be good to have some discussion on House Bill 44. You're aware that that just passed. House Bill 44 allowed for cities that don't have a civil service commission to hire police officers without benefit of an exam, which means laterals will increase dramatically. So I think it just needs to be on our radar, so that we don't lose any of those officers, because the transfer process mechanism has been very short-changed because of House Bill 44. And so, we just want to keep our fingers crossed that we keep everyone that we have and our numbers stay high. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief? Mr. Oswald?
Through you, Mr. President. Just real quick, I know we discussed this thing about the e-bikes, and maybe some new laws, or how we're going to handle that. Are you going to put somebody on working on that in the near future, so that, because there's going to be some changes? I think one of the cities just adopted, you know, some new rules on these e-bikes.
So, yes, through you, Mr. President. I just attended the new Chief of Police School in Columbus for a week, and that was a topic of conversation through many communities in Ohio, or having problems with e-bikes, electric bikes, mini bikes. So that's something that we can work with the law director's office to improve, or put something out on social media to identify the laws, so everyone is aware and on the same page.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Leiria Fire Department, Chief Pernesti.
Good evening. I just wanted to echo the safety director about the study. You know, I've said this before. Good example is 10 years ago in 2015, the Leiria Fire Department responded on around 3,500 calls, 3,580, 3,580 calls for service, structured fires EMS. Tonight, we're sitting on close to 5,540, I believe, is our next run number up. The EMS problem across the United States is only going to get worse. It's not just an Leiria problem, and I encourage each and every one of you to seriously look at this. This is the best playbook that I've seen in my career, as far as a recommendation or the problem, and where do you want to go. You cannot hide. We have got to do and look at something with the EMS system. Regardless of what is decided, there are things that are going to have to change. I don't think one thing that will never change is that you will always have Leiria firefighters responding on some type of EMS event. You cannot train these members as paramedics, or they're coming into us as paramedics, and our fire apparatus carries every drug that is needed, every type of heart medication, everything that will stop us, help a stroke, and they're minutes away from most residents in this city. So that is one thing that I never want to see change, even not so much as a fire chief anymore, but as a resident. But again, to echo what the director said, I encourage you to read this. If you have questions, call. We would love to sit down with you, but don't ignore that report. I also think you will find great value when the gentleman who did the report sits down and talks to you, whether it's individually or as a full counsel. Again, he's from out of state, so I don't know what his availability is to physically come here, but I think he had said that he would engage each counsel or each one of you singularly through a Zoom conference or something like that. So, that's all I wanted to say on that, and I'm available anytime to discuss that report, but please review it, each and every one of you. Thank you.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. City Engineer, Mr. Schneider. Any questions? Mr. Oswald?
First off, I apologize for having so many comments tonight. I will make a brief, and you don't have to answer all these, but I've been having some comments from residents and then some from myself, so I'll just go over a few of the comments that I've been having. First off, over on Park Avenue and Princeton and Oxford, the streets were being done over there, and they had to put some new curbs in, and so they were left, poured some curb not, and it happened right over Halloween. And some of the comments were made that, don't you think that you could have pushed that off after Halloween, or whatever? And I get it, when you have workers, you got to take them, but they were just saying, you know, it's kind of unsafe how they were. They had them roped off. So I was just hearing comments about that, so I just wanted to let you know. Some of the others were, they were talking about these, and I have to agree, sometimes these cones and barrels and signs stay up for so much longer past the time that the work is being done. And I don't know if there's a process that you can speed that up, so that was another comment that I've been hearing from a few residents. I said this one to you before, that I'm really adamant about, especially when you come down golf road, and it's been a while since they've done that. I've said these manhole covers that are sometimes two inches deep, they need to spray paint them around there, so that people can see them and negotiate around them. And it's not that hard to do, but I think if they put it on their to-do list, you know, we can get that done and maybe save a tire. And the other one is, the big comments that I've been having, driving down golf road, that has been done for a while, is they still haven't striped a line, and it's very hard to see at night for old people like me, and when it rains, it's even harder. So, I think we can do a little bit better if we just follow through on some of them points. I just want to let you know what some of the residents were saying. Thank you.
Are you able to comment on that, on any of those, Mr. Schneider, or do you want to just-
Sure. I'll do my best. As far as the Halloween, that's something we could put in our contracts to make sure things are opened up more so at that time of year. Just keep in mind, I mean, this goes for anything, speed, manholes, anytime you add extra restrictions to a contractor, you're going to raise the cost of construction, which is not a problem. For some of these items, for sure, for safety, I agree. Some of these items, we could look at and do some different things for, for sure. The painting, I've been on the project engineer for that one as well, and trying to get the contractor out there to paint that. The paint that we use, which is a more higher-visibility paint, there are restrictions as far as temperature requirements, weather requirements, so to get them out there sometimes is a pain. And unfortunately, this time of year, a lot of people are coveting that type of work, and they're working days and nights as much as possible. But, so hopefully, next year, we'll start the year a little sooner, so that we don't back up to the weather, because weather is definitely an item that can slow things down. We would have had all the streets we surface already, had it not rained a week or so ago, the whole week. So, we lost a whole week of production there as well. So, but as far as the manholes, I agree. I hit that mantle all the time, trust me. There's things we can do, probably temporary. We could even put grindings in them right now, just to fill them in. Not the best, but it's something to maybe get over the hump right now. So, but yeah, there's some things we can definitely improve on, I would say.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Engineer Schneider.
Thank you.
Human Resources, Ms. Yusefi.
Thank you. Through you. I just wanted to remind everybody, open enrollment started today. If you need any assistance with it, please just give us a call. You can come onto our office anytime, whatever you need. We even got our open enrollment t-shirts. That's all.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Yusefi? All right. Very good. Thank you. I see Mr. Rothke is in the back. Senior Water Distribution Manager, you want to speak? Mr. Rothke, do you have anything to, yeah? Very good. Thank you. All right. President's referrals, I think that's everybody. Presidents' and remonstrances? Yes, Mr. President. Through you. Oh, no. President's referrals from the lobby. Let me back up. President's referrals and remonstrances. Got to have sorts there. All right. Number one, community development. Number two, Community Development Planning Commission. Number three, Community Development Finance. Number four, Finance. Number five, Finance. Number six, Finance. Number seven, Finance. Number eight, Finance. Number nine, Finance and Utilities. Items 10 through 12 received and placed in the clerk's office. Petitions and remonstrances from the lobby?
We have one. Sharon Furkron, 207 Carroll Lane, subject to stoplight removal at Oberlin Road and West Avenue.
Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sharon Furkron, 207 Carroll Lane, Leiria. I am a resident of the 3rd Ward. However, when I came home from Leiria Memorial Hospital, I came home to 1809 West Avenue, which is in the 5th Ward. So, the 5th Ward is home for me, holds a special place, and I am here out of concern with the potential removal of the traffic light at Oberlin Road and West Avenue. There are many events that are held at the stadium, graduation, track, football, Battle of the Bands, a number of things that occur that involve a lot of traffic. And so I am very concerned that removing that traffic light will not only impact the motor vehicle community, but also the people that are walking, the pedestrians. It will affect them. There is a apartment building at the corner of West Avenue and Oberlin Road, where there are children. There's a corner store. They cross that street, that busy intersection, to go to the corner store. They cross it to go to the library on 15th Street. And it's really busy on the weekends, especially- And it's really busy on the weekends, especially with the traffic going to and from Rural King. So, I did speak to the Safety Service Director when I arrived here tonight. I apologize to you, Mr. Armstrong, I did not get an opportunity to speak to you. However, I'd like to understand what safety precautions are being taken to make sure that we don't have an increase in accidents and incidents at that intersection.
Okay, so what I would suggest is that, that maybe we could set something up with you, with the engineer and the Safety Service, the engineer and the Safety Service Director to kind of meet and discuss, you know, your concerns. This was brought to the committee and, and some discussion in regards to what is being proposed over and through there. I would recommend that Mr. Armstrong be part of those conversations, whether it's with that or if you have to individually. But it was a lot of good conversation in regards to what was being proposed over and through there. And I think it would be advantageous of you to meet with them to kind of listen to your, you know, concerns in regards to that. So, I would, you know, say if you can coordinate with them, if the Safety Service Director wants to meet with you after you step aside there, you can kind of get your information and meeting.
Great, thank you.
Very good, thank you. That's all the petitions and rosters from the lobby?
Petitions and remontresses from council members.
Mr. Lippian, Mr. Lippian has one.
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. President. I'd like to call the mayor and Safety Service Director Pineowski to the front, please.
Congratulations, Mr. Pineowski, on all your efforts. Are there any other reports from council members?
There are none.
Reports of standing in special committees?
There are none.
Resolutions first reading?
Sponsored by Finance, a resolution finding that the city has unfit from municipal use certain city property.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this resolution be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty. That's all resolutions first reading?
Resolutions second reading?
There are none.
Resolutions third reading?
There are none.
Ordinance is first reading?
Sponsored by Finance, an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director of the city of Alaria to dispose of city property that is unfit for municipal use.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second by Ms. Davis, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one eighty. Sponsored by Community Development and Finance. An ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one sixty-nine, approving a second extension and reimbursement increase for a downtown historic redevelopment grant program, application for improvements at one twenty-four Middle Avenue, Alaria, Ohio.
Mr. Schneider?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sarah, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-one.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Yes. I would like to recuse myself from item number four.
Very good. For the record, Mr. Callahan recuses himself from reading of the next ordinance.
Sponsored by Finance, ordinance authorizing the adoption of the proposed twenty twenty-five compensation study completed by Gallagher Benefit Services, Inc.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules.
Second.
Second by Ms. Werka, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-two. Sponsored by Finance, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven, known as the twenty twenty-five Permanent Appropriations Ordinance, to change funds in various accounts.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules. Second.
Second by Mr. Schneider, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-three. Sponsored by Finance, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a mutual easement agreement with real property owner Jamil Elder for the shared stairwell at three thirty-six and three forty Broad Street, Alaria, Ohio, four four oh three five, and declare an emergency.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-four. Sponsored by Finance, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Alaria Youth Sports Club, an Ohio nonprofit corporation, to utilize city-owned property located at three thirty-eight Broad Street, Alaria, Ohio, four four oh three five, and declare an emergency.
Mr. Tolet?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency. Second.
Second by Mr. Schneider, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-five. Sponsored by Utilities and Finance. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter a professional services agreement with Hazen and Sawyer for design services and declare emergency.
Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. President, I ask that this ordinance be passed in its first reading under suspension of rules and declared an emergency.
Second by Mr. Armstrong, is there any further discussion?
Question.
On the suspension, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the emergency, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. On the passage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-six. That's all ordinance's first reading?
Ordinance's second reading?
We have one. Sponsored by Community Development. An ordinance amending section eleven thirty-one point oh two, codified ordinances of the city of Alaria, Ohio, known as the zoning ordinance, to rezone certain real property located on West Ridge Road, Alaria, from a R-dash MHL residential multi-household low-density district and a R-dash MHH residential multi-household high-density to a R-dash MHH residential multi-household high-density district.
Declare this ordinance's head at second reading. Public hearing is scheduled for November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven PM. That's all the ordinance's second reading? Ordinance's third reading? There are none? Committee calls.
Community Development requests the law director, safety service director, building inspector and engineer on Monday eleven-ten, beginning at six PM. Joint CD Finance requests the law director, safety service director, building inspector and engineer on Monday eleven-ten, immediately file on the community development. Finance requests the mayor, law director, finance director, safety service director and engineer on Monday eleven-ten, immediately file on the joint strategic plan and request the mayor, safety service director, finance director, law director on Monday eleven-seventeen, immediately filing the full council.
Uh, miscellaneous and unfinished business. Mr. Callahan and Ms. Mitchell?
Through you, Mr. Stewart. I would like to wish everybody who was on the ballot tomorrow, good luck. And I'd like to say, celebrate your freedom and get out and vote. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I wanted to inform everyone that, as we all know, the SNAP benefits have been stopped, and there are a lot of people who are hurting or will be hurting. So, Second Baptist Church, Alaria, Ohio, we are having a spaghetti dinner, a free dinner. It will be every Friday. We've joined forces with other churches, but it will be, the meal will be held at Second Baptist, four twenty-seven Chapman Lane, here in Alaria. The time is from four to six. Everyone is invited. If you want to come out and have a good spaghetti dinner, you're welcome to join us, and I hope you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell, that's a great cause. You know, it's a difficult time right now for everybody. They appreciate you taking the lead on that. Any other miscellaneous and unfinished business? Mayor Brubaker?
Mr. President, I apologize, there is a big event this weekend. On Saturday, right here in downtown, is the fourth overall, but third time in the city of Alaria, REV twenty-two K race. We are expecting over five hundred participants right downtown here and running throughout downtown. So, I'd encourage anybody that wants to come out, there'll be food trucks. The fire department will be here with the big flag hanging from the ladder truck. We're going to utilize the police department e-bikes to lead their, lead runner, male and female, of the twenty-two K into the finish line. So, it's going to be an exciting time, but we're happy to coordinate and collaborate with the Lorraine County Veterans Commission on this event. Thank you.
Very good. Any other miscellaneous and unfinished business? If not, Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. President, seeing that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned.
Oh, I think it's been, been celebrated.